All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Toles to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
This morning, our heavenly Father, as we all approach your throne of grace and mercy, we thank you for this opportunity that you have allowed your people to come together to be able to make decisions. We thank you for this freedom that we experience and we give you all the praise. We pray for every citizen here and we pray for this council as we conduct the business of Gadsden. We thank you and we give you praise in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on March 29th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of March 24th through the 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
The first one is, I could ask David Elliott and Denise Cooy to come up, please.
This is the EMA department and a lot of the volunteers who volunteer for EMA Emergency Management. I'm glad, I was looking over the crowd. My daddy used to say there'd be eight or 10 of us talking, they thought the poo-haul burned. Anyway, we appreciate what you do. Whereas the foundation of a humane and just society is the people's willingness to work together for the common good. Volunteerism historically reflects the highest values of our democratic society in that regardless of the situation, station, age, race, creed, all may volunteer and thus rich rewards that come from giving aid to others while improving one's own skills and widening one's horizons. Americans are willing and eager to volunteer and bring people together in response to our community's critical needs. Our volunteers demonstrate that it is possible to bring people together in response to our community's critical needs. It is the duty of every citizen and leader to honor our dedicated volunteers and to celebrate the volunteer programs that contribute to the quality of life in Gadsden and our surrounding communities. Therefore, I Sherman-Gatton Mayor of the City of Gadsden do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through the 15th is National Volunteer Appreciation Week in Gadsden, Alabama, and urge our citizens to join me as we celebrate this special day.
This is a national week of volunteer appreciation and I'd just like to say, this is to recognize all volunteers, it's not just the EMA volunteers, but we have many that have full-time jobs, that they work after hours, they take vacation days from their job to come and volunteer with us. Many of them are members of the Community Emergency Response Team who are trained individuals to go out in the community and help their neighbors in times of disaster. There's faith-based organizations like the Edgewall Baptist Association, some of the others, I can't name them all, but RSVP, Red Cross, United Way, organizations that depend really heavily on volunteers. And again, I just want to say thank you to all you guys that showed up and we've got so many more, I think, that we invited to this but couldn't come because, like I say, they have a job or whatever. But they give their free time to try to make Gadsden, Edgewall County, a better place to live. So, thank you, guys, and as I say, if they may be excused, like I say, some of them have a job, they gotta go back there. Thank you.
I do want to mention, many of you see Kay Moore, she's going out the door there. Last week, we had a very successful kids' preparedness treasure hunt and without the partnership of downtown Gadsden, I don't think it would have been as successful and I really wanted to say thank you to UK and we'd not gotten in a situation where we could, but thank you for you, your volunteers, the staff, and all that you did to make that a success last week.
This lady is Deborah, she's over the EMA. We hired her about eight or nine years ago and they have a workforce group down there who knows how to handle a lot of things. I can't spell acronyms, but she knows more of them than I could ever imagine. She's got a little abbreviation for everything and I'm saying, what's that mean? We really appreciate her and her whole group. Thank you. The next proclamation I have is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Who's, okay, there she is. Dina Thacker? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life as well as being our most valuable assets, all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities that they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of a lack of a community. Communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children to ensure that children grow to their full potential. Effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, I Sherman-Gatton Mayor of the City of Gadsden do hereby proclaim April Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon the citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, businesses, to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live.
I'm Misty Ledbetter, the Legal Services Attorney, and I'm filling in today for Dina Thacker, who's the coordinator of our Safe and Successful Program at Family Success Center. She sends her regards, she's very sick today, so I apologize. But as many of you may know, April is National Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. The Safe and Successful Program is run under the Family Success Center and it's the only program in this county that actually goes in and meets and talks to all the students across the county. And so far this year, they've seen 6,000 students from pre-K up to grade 10 and also the teen pregnant moms in the area. It's with these programs that we're able to educate the children and help to prevent the child abuse that's happening in this area. So if you see these beautiful blue bows this month, all around town, in the offices and on doors of businesses and homes, know that those are in support of Child Abuse Awareness Month and we're offering those at the Family Success Center as a fundraiser for the Safe and Successful Program. So if you'd like to come by the office sometime and pick one of those up and help support the program and further into the schools in this county, those are $10. So we'd like you all to accept that as a token of our appreciation for all the support that you guys give to this community and to all the citizens in supporting child abuse awareness. Thank you.
I'd like to pass up the opportunity right quick to say something about children. It's so important when they're in school at a learning age. My wife is a guidance counselor at an alternative high school for the county and so many kids used to teach science for about 15 years before she took that job. But anyway, so many kids do not learn to read, understand what they're reading, and do math. And if everybody would really push that to the parents, it's so important because if they get to the seventh or eighth grade, they get lost, they don't know what's going on, they get embarrassed, they get in trouble, they quit school. We've really got to encourage the parents and the grandparents or whoever to teach them how to read and understand what they're reading and do the math. And they get it in the schools, but they need a lot more pushing when they get home. You ever seen the Bean Carson story? His mother couldn't read him right, but every time they would take their work to her, she would tell him, "Well, you need to do some more, write another report, or read it again," or whatever, and that she didn't even know what the words were. But you see how he turned out. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and thanks to both of those very notable organizations and what you do in the community. We really appreciate that. Item number 8A and B, those properties located at both 3200 Sansom Avenue and 807 Vandale Boulevard have been abated by the owners, therefore no action is required on the part of the council. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1419 Cansler Avenue in District 3. Robert Buchanan and possible rights of redemption of Lonnie Moore and/or the heirs of Lonnie Moore being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, if you would, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Robert Buchanan. For my mailing address here, it's post office box 243 Gadsden, Alabama. Ladies and gentlemen, I have an eight-minute statement to read that will give you the big picture about this property. I will give you the council a copy and the mayor a copy after I get through and I will give you the name of an elder gentleman of a respected family that you can contact if you have any questions about my statement and to check my veracity. In the simplest form, this is a case of double indemnity. The ancestral home of Mrs. Lala Martin, head librarian of Gadsden Public Library for many years, was 1419 Cansler Avenue. I bought it about 15 years ago when it had been condemned for a long time. Taking out the building permit, I worked on it six days a week. I replaced rotted joists in the front and side porches used, pressure-treated three-quarter inch plywood for the flooring. Put a pressure-treated six-by-six inside the porch board column, built new pressure-treated two-by-four railings. I reframed the porch roofs extending these out four feet and installed $2,000 of beadboard on the soffits with a ventilated strip. I reframed the fourth porch roof to tie smoothly into the existing 812 main roof. I replaced rotted rafters and rotted shingle boards, added more bracing in the attic, installed five-eighths plywood over the whole roof, and installed 67 squares of Miami-dade hurricane-ready shingles and encoded the whole roof with Cool-Watt roof coating. After about one and a half years of six-to-eight weeks of never seeing the building inspector, the power company came out to disconnect the power so that the city could begin to demolish. I objected and went to see the building inspector, but he was not in. I went to the mayor's office and saw Mr. Singleton, who called Mr. Harbison, who finally agreed to suspend further action if I would call him every Friday afternoon and tell him what I had done each week. This I did for two months, then he agreed to sign off on the repairs and I would not have to call him anymore. After working another six or eight weeks, months scraping, painting, and brick in two-thirds of my backyard, the drug lord of Gadsden sanctioned my murder. He doesn't like the nickname I gave him, Strain Through a Sheet. He was the bagman, scouted my location, and one hour later, the Birmingham idiots the drug lord works for sent up their number-one enforcer, a black guy called Psycho, who murdered a snitch in East Gadsden a few years before then by shooting him 25 times and mangling a perfectly good suburban.
Mr. Buchanan?
What?
I'm right here.
Pardon me?
So what we would like for you to get to, if you can help us, is what are you needing from this council regarding the nuisance?
I will give you the statement, but I would rather read it and have the audience know what I'm talking about because this involves a fellow that has sanctioned murder in this town four times and I don't think that should stand. Now, can I proceed?
You can. Will you be providing us a copy of whatever it is you referenced?
I will be providing you a copy to the murderer and to the council and a reference you can contact to check the veracity of my statement.
Okay. What we, again, would like for you to do is just please get to the point of letting us know what it is you'd like this council to consider.
Okay. Well, it gets deeper here, so let me go a little further and then you'll see what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Anyway, the murder I was talking about, where he murdered a snitch, he shot him 25 times, which is not a public knowledge item. The murder was sanctioned by the drug lord. Later, the Birmingham idiots sent their other two enforcers, both of those are white, to ambush me. I have a standing offer to duel with all three of them at the same time. After working more on the house, my mother's Alzheimer's required 24/7 care from me for over 10 years. She just recently died. I am now in the process of selling all my properties in Georgia to form my first corporation, The Phoenix Project, to rebuild Gadsden, one to four new houses a year. A guy bought the old house right next to me for $12,000 and put about $50,000 in it. New metal roof, hardwood floors, decorative rock, screen porch addition, and now is putting a seven-foot-two-inch stockade-type fence on the back and the sides. Out of the blue, I received a letter from Mr. Harbison saying that 1419 was now condemned. I was to take out a building permit for $587 and pay for having my own house torn down and if I didn't, I would be arrested and thrown in jail. That letter is now in my lawyer's office in another state, but I am not inclined to make money off my hometown. I have now made the connection between my left and right neighbors. They are both friends of the drug lord and his ambitious but not too bright son. The Birmingham idiots worked for the Atlanta idiots I got crossways of in 1986. They're number-one cowboy and I used to be on the same payroll a long time ago before he went rogue. He had the bad manners to try to ambush me three doors down from where he lives next to Deep North Georgia Lake under an A that's made up of his name, his son's name, and his lawyer's name.
Mr. Buchanan, we're gonna, please, with all due respect, we're asking you to get to the point that you want the council to consider.
Okay.
Or we're gonna have to ask you to sit down.
Well, I won't finish my statement, but I'll give you the gist of it. Anyway, I would like to thank Mr. Harbison for taking that letter I sent him straight over to the ones I wanted to get it. They called me from 1:00 PM to 4:30 AM the next day. I hope they don't get mad at Mr. Harbison for falling for that old technique.
Please don't refer to anyone by name, sir. Please do not refer in your statement, you're not allowed to refer to anyone by name.
Okay. I hope they don't get mad at the fellow that fell for the old technique of mine I call the ping, P-I-N-G. I certainly hope they don't hurt him. After all, I'm the one that's been calling him that vulgar name for many years just to stir up a new game. But I didn't like what they did to Mrs. Tokars. For my character reference, feel free to contact Mr. Roberto Gambino of Buckhead, Georgia. Ask him if they still have that laundry in Birmingham called Southland and would he recommend betting the farm on quote, unquote, Michael Decker, unquote.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes my statement.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, I'd like to ask you a question. Since you're, the house is in District 3 that I represent, are you asking us for more time to bring the house under code?
I'm asking you for more time for me to set up my corporation when I set up my properties in Georgia so I can set up a home building.
Sir.
Pardon me?
How long do you think that's gonna take? Do you need 30 days, 60 days?
I would like to have a year.
No, sir. I can't give you that many days. I could try to give you 60 days if you could bring it under code by then. Can you do that?
I will start working on it in 60 days.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're telling me you will be able to do it, bring it up to code in 60 days?
I will start trying to do it.
If we give you 60 days.
In the meantime, I would like to leave a counsel a copy and a mayor copy to the murderer and y'all are free to contact the reference I gave you.
You don't have to leave.
That's the counsel. This is murderer's.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started our case in September of last year. The last permit on file in my office was 17 years ago this month. There've been no improvements since our case started. We're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Mr. Harbison, did you say this has been going on for 17 years?
Well, that's the last building permit that was issued.
What was the gentleman talking about? Kid got a letter for a permit that was gonna be $582, what was all that about?
I have no idea.
I was just a little confused there, I didn't own that $582 stuff.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Look, I'm gonna ask the council that we give him 60 days because he's done a lot of work on the house, but looking at the back of it, when I looked at the front of it yesterday, and the house also has 1417 on it, but the legal description is 1419. But I'm gonna ask to give him 60 days.
So we have a motion? Is there a second?
Well, I guess he won't be getting 60 days.
All right, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
All right.
Do we need to take a roll call vote?
Let's take a roll call vote.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to table the resolution for 60 days. Councilwoman Toles?
No.
Williams?
No.
Worthy?
Yes.
Echols?
No.
Billingsley?
No.
Cannon?
No.
Reed?
No.
The motion to table fails to carry.
Okay, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 555.
Excuse, what did we actually do with the item if we did not table it?
We have to vote on it.
So we've got to vote on the item. Okay. So we still have the resolution to abate the nuisance. So do I have a motion to consider it?
I move to obey.
Okay.
Is there any discussion there? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. I'm recording one no unless someone else. Okay. Motion carries to adopt.
All right. Now.
You'll be the worst, my shot, when he comes back.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 555 Lime Street in District 3, Jack Low Jr. being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Mr. Low, if you would, give your name and address, please.
I am Jack Low Jr. I live at 209 Oak Drive here in Gadsden. I can't say I'm in favor or I'm against. I've talked with Mr. Harbison and I've conversed in reference to the properties and it'll be more than one, it'll be another piece that'll come before this council. I'm between a rock and a hard place and the reason I say that is because the property belonged to my dad. My dad's been passed now since this past March. Well, I paid all the taxes and all that up to this point. Now, I'm not, I don't know who actually owned the property, to tell you the truth, at this point in time because the city of Gadsden gonna have a piece of it, the state of Alabama gonna have a piece of it, the county of Edgewall County is gonna have a piece of it, and I'm out here in limbo and I'm getting all these tax notices and trying to maintain the property. So I don't know and I asked this council to use their legal expertise in order to let me know how I really stand. I'm not willing to put money in the property that's not gonna be mine ever or whatever. So I don't know the answer to that. But I'm a law-abiding citizen and I've been there all of my life. But if you all can tell me who's actually going on it, I'm not gonna put money in something that's not gonna be mine or my children. So that's the reason I said I'm not for and I'm not against, but whatever this council. Now, Mr. Harbison has done his job in order to enlighten me the best he could and we still in limbo.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Low. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in September. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. The title opinion does list Mr. Low as the owner with the address being 209 Oak Drive, I believe is what he shared today. He is the sole owner, according to the title opinion, and my recommendation is today that you pass a resolution allowing us to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Mr. Harbison, is there anyone else that has a financial interest in?
No.
Okay.
Did Mr. Low's dad have the same name as him? Mr. Low, was your dad have the same name as you?
Yes, he's Jack Low Senior.
This is Jack Low Jr. As the owner.
May I hear it, Ray?
Yes.
My point is, my mom, she's in a nursing home. Nursing home, acquire all the properties within that name. Jack Low Senior, I own that, the state of Alabama, gonna get this property. Edgewall County, yeah, the lien, you will have a lien and facts, yeah, please.
Okay.
But I'm not gonna pay tax, I'm not sure who owns it. If I'm gonna own it, I'll do what I'm supposed to do.
Is there any way to clear the title, if I ask you, Mr. Harbison? Could it get a title search, please?
We've already done it.
We've got a title search on it and it shows, you know, Mr. Low Jr. as the property owner. Now, to get there, I'd have to go back and sit down with him as I would a private client and go back and explain things to him. Now, as far as a nursing, like for example, a nursing home goes, a lot of people, as far as their estate planning, will deed their property to their children and there's a three-year window, I think it's been moved a little bit to five years. will, will deed their property to their children, and there's a three-year window, I think it's been moved a little bit to five years maybes. But there's a window there, uh, that as long as it resides in someone else's hands for that period of time, then it's assumed to, you know, then it, it's not brought back in by Medicare, the state of Alabama. Uh, but I don't know what your situation is, I would advise you to sit down with a lawyer and, and discuss it.
I've, I've done that. Now, what I, I need this counsel to, to legally tell, to let me know, you're saying I own it. Well, but the state of Alabama, the nursing home, and Medicaid, you say I don't own it. Now, I want them to own it.
Well, you, what we're talking is two different perspectives. Now, if I were in private practice, I would sit down and I could explain this to you. Of course, I'd have to go back and do the title search myself and explain these issues to you. Now, as, as the attorney for the city, my obligation is, is, is to notify the proper owners of this property or mortgage holders of this property. And so that's what we do, we notify the proper owner and any mortgage holder. We don't notify lien holders, 'cause state law doesn't require us to notify lien holders, and that's who you're talking about.
Yeah.
And if that's the fact, then I don't own it, but then again, you're saying I do own it, you're saying I don't own it.
Yeah, I've, Mr. Low, what, what I would, what I would encourage you to do is exactly what, uh, what, what he's, what he's referencing. Secure legal counsel, and if you're disputing the results of the title opinion and title search, I would have him to pursue that for you just to ensure that you're truly not the owner. And if there's any, that's why I asked Mr. Harbison the question, is there anybody else that has a financial interest in this property? If there is, then your legal counsel should be able to uncover that. But I would, I don't, I don't know that you want a set of, uh, elected officials kind of pursuing that for you. You, you want, you want your attorney to clear up the, the title issue for you.
If in fact, uh, attorney's, we'll be surprised, about fifty, about a hundred. You know.
You can sit and see if you get a verdict.
Now, all I'm saying is, don't send me another notice saying that I'm, 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 I'm. Somebody can pay my legal counsel fee, that's fine.
We're not holding you accountable, okay? All, all we're doing is, we, by law, we have to notify you before we carry on with a public hearing, and before we do, we have to do it. The law requires us to do that, now, in the end, we don't hold you accountable, okay? In the end, if, if, if we, if we wind up abating the nuisance, whatever cost it, we incurred in abating the nuisance, we'll then put a lien on the property, okay? So it doesn't come out of your pocket. Exactly. For the, uh, Mr. Chief Low, for the sake of transparency, I won't let people know, and we've talked about this before, and I, I, and we went over this and told you to get an attorney, or suggested you get an attorney to make sure you find out who owns the property. So, uh, at this stage, I'm gonna ask him to go ahead and abate it, but you can get with Mr. Harbison and, uh, talk about it, uh, whatever.
Well, just go ahead and abate it. I'll do what you can.
All right. What, what is the pleasure of the counsel?
I'm gonna move to adopt the abate.
Is that what y'all want?
Is that that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go along, man, this is in my district.
No, it's not, that's in my district.
When did you get it?
They may.
They live, they live in your district.
The owner is in my district.
He, he may live in your district, but the property is in my district. Unless you come over off Tuscaloosa now, I don't know about it.
Can I go ahead and just second it?
All right, so we have a motion, we have a motion and a second to abate the nuisance. Call for the vote, clerk.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
What is in the water today, I don't know. Our, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at twenty-seven twenty-two Hickory Street in District Six, the estate of Willie Bell Kirkland, care of James L. Kirkland being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in May of last year, there've been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in May of two thousand sixteen with no work done on that permit. We're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the counsel?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at thirty-six oh four Williams Avenue in District Seven, Donald Kenneth Ellison and Donald Kenneth Ellison Jr. being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? So if you would.
Uh, my name's Don Ellison, live at two two seven Bryant Drive, Tall, Alabama. I don't got no big statements to say, there's no grand plan about this property or nothing, there's no extenuating circumstances. I've just owned it for several years, and I'm the only one that's able to work on it, and I'm sorry it's taken so long, and I know it's taken me a long time. But I'm just here to ask for a little more leniency from the council. I just want another chance to prove that I can get this property back to everybody's likens.
How, how much time do you need, Mr. Tolls?
As much as you can give me. Like I say, it's just money.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in April of last year. There've been no improvements to the property, was a building permit taken out in August of two thousand sixteen. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Yeah, the permit was.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's what he indicated, yeah. What is the pleasure of the counsel?
Yeah, this is in my district, and it's, uh, it is now soaring in the commute, I don't see how in the world it's still standing, but he says it is. I tell you what we're gonna do, I'm gonna go ahead and make a move to abate it, all right? And then we'll do that, and I want you to get in touch with Mr. Harbison, and any improvements that you start making on that property from the roof down, uh, in the next few months, before we ever get around to the total abating of the property, okay? We can stop at that point. But we need to move on. I know, I know, it's still going, it's still in progress, but what I'm saying is, I'm gonna go ahead and, and move to abate it. But then you've got time during a period of time before they do abate it, which would be a pretty good time, to talk to Mr. Harbison. All I do know is there are a hundred and thirty-six houses ahead of you, so that'll take a pretty good while. My suggestion is that you get with Mr. Harbison after the meeting, and we'll go from there, okay?
Second.
All right, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and we have four locations. We have nine oh five McKissack Street, it's in District Two, uh, it's three thousand forty-one dollars and forty cents. Eleven oh eight Hurst Street in District Three, nineteen hundred forty-one dollars and forty cents. Twenty-one oh four Norris Avenue in District Six, three thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and forty six, forty cents. And thirty-two oh one Sheahan Avenue in District Six, twenty-four hundred sixteen dollars and forty cents. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four.
Our next public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Barbara Sue Fentress, doing business as Quick Stop, located at eighteen oh eight East Meagan Boulevard, has applied for an off-premises-only retail beer and table wine license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain adoption, a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Zalisco LLC being, doing business as Old Mexico Cantina, located at ninety-three Walker Street, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move, second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number nineteen is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Gadsden Community Development Commission. This appoints Pam Terrence for a term expiring March thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and reappoints Inez Bonner and Jimmy Burnett for terms expiring March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move, second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number twenty is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the Certificate of Incorporation of Etowah, DeKalb Cherokee Mental Health Board. This amends the Articles of Incorporation and bylaws to correctly reflect the appointment of board members to include the cities of Attala, Center, and Fort Payne. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number twenty-one is a resolution authorizing agreement with IWHT, Gadsden Junior Golf Association. This is for events to be held during the months of April through July of two thousand seventeen, and the amount is thirty-five hundred dollars. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number twenty-two is a resolution authorizing addendum to contract with the Gadsden State Community College. The contract was previously approved by R dash twenty-six dash seventeen, but some items were added to comply with Al, the Alabama Community College system requirements. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a, a request for a, a resolution for unanimous consent to hear the resolution recommending the resignation of James Turnbar from the Waterworks and Sewer Board, because he does not live in the city, does not live in the county.
So we have a motion to consider, is there a second? Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, I've, um, written Mr. Turnbar a letter, uh, stating the, the reason that I'm asking him to resign from the board, and, uh, I have not heard from him in regards to the letter yet, so, uh, hopefully, he will do that without creating a disturbance or anything.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote. Councilman Reed?
No.
Cannon?
Yes.
Billingsley?
Yes.
Echols?
No.
Worthy?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Tolls?
Abstain.
All righty, the, uh, resolution is adopted by four votes, to, and we have two noes and one abstention.
And this, I might add, this was just a, asking them to, it's not making them to, we're just asking them to, correct, Mr. Billingsley?
That's correct.
All right, is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards?
I don't normally take your time during department reports, but I think today's a perfect opportunity. I left some of you, um, the severe weather outlook for overnight and tomorrow. We have not been at a confidence level of four out of five since two thousand eleven, um, when we had severe weather. And overnight, um, Wednesday, early morning Wednesday, and into the evening on Wednesday, we have a large confidence level of severe weather happening in our area. Also, um, we have not been at a risk for moderate or enhanced, um, alerts in over a year. So I wanted to take a moment just to make it, um, make everyone be weather aware for the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours about, um, what is going on, where you're traveling to, where you're traveling from, where your, where your children or grandchildren are at school, where you work, those, those things. So take note of the forecast before you go to bed tonight. Plug in your, your, um, Noah Weather Radio, check the batteries, the things that you would normally do to prepare for severe weather season, because it is upon us now.
Deborah, what's the confidence factor again?
Um, a four out of five.
So it's a four, okay.
It's a four.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Morning.
This afternoon now, uh, I did, uh, I do want to announce to everybody and, um, invite everyone up to Knocklough Falls Park and Campground this weekend. We have the Smoke on the Falls, uh, barbecue festival, and the Smoke Your Buns five K on Saturday. Uh, Friday evening for Smoke on the Falls, we are doing a Dean, uh, sausage cook-off. Uh, turn-in time is at five, and after that, everybody can come and meet and greet all of our professional and backyard cookers that will be cooking on Saturday. On Saturday morning, we start off at eight A.M. with the Smoke Your Buns run, it's a timed five K. It's twenty-five dollars per, uh, person to run. And then at, uh, ten A.M., our festival gates open, it is five dollars to enter. With your five-dollar, uh, gate fee, you do have a chance to win a grill, a gas grill from Academy. Um, at ten-thirty, Carl Brady starts off our entertainment on our stage, then he is followed by a new delusion. We will, uh, take a break at one for our wing eating contest presented by Popeyes. Uh, and at two, Within Reason, we'll be there, uh, to finish off the day. At four P.M., award ceremony will be happening for all of our backyard and professional, uh, barbecuers. There is a chance to win over a thousand dollars for this festival and competition. Uh, there's a breakdown for ribs, chicken, pork brisket, and there's a grand champion and a reserve grand. We will have Southern Mama walking around and being our celebrity judge. Uh, he is, if you have not seen him, he is on Facebook, and you can check out his, uh, many different ta, um, takes on being a Southern Mama. We do want to thank our sponsors, uh, it's Gadsden Regional Medical Center, Academy, McDonald's, The Steel, Greater Gadsden, Black The Steel, Greater Gadsden, Blackstone, Messenger, State Farm, J.A. Dawson, Dean Sausage, Coke, Johnson Giants Food, Paul Mountain Meats, H and M Freeman Motors, Observer, Budweiser Bottling Company, also the Popeyes, and is doing the wing eating. Jack's will be, there will be a Kid Zone presented by Jack's, and there will also be food and Arch and Craft vendors. With DJI on Friday night, we do want to ask everybody to come out for our first Friday for April seventh down on Broad Street in downtown Gadsden. There will be music on Third and Broad, Fourth and Broad, Fifth and Broad, and at the Pittman. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Alright, we have citizens' requests, Mr. Cole?
While he's coming up, I would like to remind people of last week when somebody said they weren't anything to do in Gadsden. And what she just said is gonna fill up pretty well the whole weekend, if they're listening.
To President Williams, members of the council, Mayor Guyton, all in the chamber, and to the listening and viewing audience. Today marks the forty-ninth anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King. Dr. King was in Memphis supporting transit workers. So I'm here today supporting an entry level increase for the Gadsden police officers, and also asking that the NAIS hire on the Department of Parks and Recreation be an African American. I have passed out a copy to each one of you, an analysis that was drawn up by my CPA to show how much it would cost the city to do this increase. Now, I use, as far as my increase, and I'm not the mayor, but I use sixteen dollars. The current hourly rate for a police officer in Gadsden is thirteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. One of the police officers left last week to go and work at Walmart. So that's what the situation is, and this will continue to happen until you increase this rate. If young men are going to join the force to put their life on the line, I think it should be more than thirteen thirty-nine. And you will see in my increase how much it would take. And once this is done, each time you give a rate increase, I mean, I don't mean a rate increase, a raise to the employees, just do that percentage to the entry level fee, and that way you won't have to come back to this anymore. I did this for twenty-six weeks, my numbers dash from April until September the thirtieth, 'cause your year starts in October, so you need to look at it, consider it. It's not going away, and it's not going to get any better. Now, it's five hundred and some thousand dollars to do this, 'cause you have to deal with the one hundred officers you have. That increase is two dollars and sixty-one cents. They work two shift, a thirty-six hour shift, and a forty-eight hour shift. Everything is there for overtime and all for that entire time. Now, when October come around, you wouldn't have to get a police raise, then party a raise, then you start and take care of the fire. But those are the numbers, you can look at it, you can study it, but you do need to do something, because it's not fair to them, and it's not fair to the citizens. You have officers here who are making thirteen dollars and thirty-nine cents, and they leaving the city to go work at Walmart. The second thing I want to cover, Mr. Mayor and to the council, is department head. And in this city, which African American compose of forty-seven percent of the population, we do not have not one African American department head. Somebody said that the magistrate at the court, but the magistrate is not a department head, the judge is the one over the court. And Mr. Mayor, I've told you on number occasion that I have, I respect you immensely. Your word to me have always been on track, and we've always been able to talk. We haven't always agreed, but we always talk. But I'm coming to you today 'cause I want to know, in this decision that is made, there were rumors, rumors wrong, just flows over Gadsden. You hear something every day, it's a small city. The first rumor I had was that the disposition was not going to be posted, it was going to be reclassified, and you all had someone that you was grooming to put in this place. But I spoke to the director personnel, and that rumor was wiped out, he told me the job will be posted. And so people will have a chance to advertise and submit their application and work. On that level, we are not begging you, Mr. Mayor, but we feel like that position should be filled with a qualified black applicant, and there are some who's going to apply for this position. And what I would like to know from you, and the other citizens would like to know from you, in the decision-making factor, will you be the one to make this decision? Is it going to be a committee, or what would be the process? I know you're not going to answer now, but when I take my seat and you give your remarks, we really would like to know. I don't like to necessarily put things on a black-white issue, but when they black and white, we have to do it. You got twenty-five department heads, they're all white. You have one vacancy, no one is in there. There isn't any reason why that position should not be filled with a qualified African American. Anytime we say blacks want a position, the first thing, they got to be qualified. We wouldn't ask, I wouldn't want a black unqualified nor a white unqualified. But this is what we asking for, and this is what we want. And you are the one who makes that decision, because you're the mayor of this city. The council don't make it, they can tell you what they prefer, and sometime I wish they would, not saying that they don't. But I'm speaking here, and I'm speaking for a large segment of this community that said that we want a black put in that position. Now, there's a bit of taste in people's mouth on what happened to the last individual, and we not going to go into that. That individual's gone and have another job somewhere. We are working on now, the present, and we're gonna move to the future. I knew that was gonna happen, but we want you to let us know. And also to council members, I would like to hear your remarks on the information that I just passed out. How do you feel about the police? Everybody say you support them, but let's hear what you said in support of this raise.
Well, stay right there where you are, Joe, and let me give my speech, how about that?
I appreciate that.
Good.
Mr. Cole, you can.
First of all, I've gone through this with you about the police a couple times, and I don't know about your accountant and all that, and you got a lot of numbers here, it looks good. I'll give you the facts. If we start paying after what, so many weeks, they get an automatic raise from when they first start. You know, they ride for a couple of weeks or more, but they get an automatic raise right off the bat. I can't tell you that figure, but they do get a raise. We have a pay scale. If we did what you're asking to do, you would have somebody making more than somebody been there a year or two. So, but let me go on and finish. We pay eighty percent of their insurance, we give them a car to drive, which is at least a thousand dollars a month, time you have gas, repairs, anything you need, insurance you don't have to pay, and that's fine, I'm glad we do that, we want a presence. But they're making between, probably, on the average, between seventy-plus to eighty. And that does not count the opportunity, when they on patrol, they work a shift, and I think they're off a day or two.
Excuse me a second.
Wait a minute, no, I'm talking, I let you talk, you let me talk.
I want to respond.
Okay, you just hang on to that point.
I will, I will.
And then they can work as SROs at the schools, and they also get paid. So, you know, you don't know enough about what you're talking about to make sense. Everybody wants a raise all the time, and we, we very good to our employees. We've given ten raises in eleven budgets. When I got here, we owed eighty million dollars, had a million and a half in the bank, and I mean, yeah, in the bank, and had seven and a half million in bond payments. We've come a long way, we now have a hundred and four or five policemen, they're riding right now. But we know more about what's going on than you do. And then I'm going to get to the thing about the Parks and Rec thing. It is usually the personnel comes down with two or three names and talk to me about who they interviewed and all that, and we make the decision. I have no problem hiring blacks. Actually, I, it makes me so mad, I've done more for the black community since I've been here, it's been done a hundred years. So you can get out in race bait if you want to, you look at all the improvements, Carver Rec Center, everything on Tuscaloosa, new swimming pool going in, the rec center over in East Gadsden. Don't hand me that trash, you can't get many people to apply for jobs. That's exactly what the problem is with police. And I give the booklets for the test to some, a group, Teresa, you know, Teresa with a reporter, and they're teaching blacks how to pass the fire and police exam. I'm all for it, but then you never get them. They never show up. So we're waiting, we'll hire anybody that comes along of the minority, I assure you, females too.
May I speak now?
I guess you can.
Okay, I'm not gonna get emotional. One thing, I resent the fact you tell me I don't know what I'm doing or talking about. I do know, in the paper that I gave you, you said if you do what I asked you to do, everybody will be getting different rate, that is untrue. On there, every police officer, all one hundred, will get two dollars and sixty-one cents. That's not going to change anything. Everything will still be on the same equilibrium. And all this other, now, I'm not getting into this race baiting, and I'll let you all handle that.
Yeah.
My point is, my point, and I never have accused you of that, have I?
You insinuated.
When?
Well, I went about the department heads. Which department head that's been here twenty-five or thirty-five years, do you want me to get rid of to hire somebody?
Did I say that?
No, I'm just telling you the facts. You can't get rid of people that's been here until they retire.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, I've heard, yeah, and I've allowed you, your five minutes, your five minutes of.
He said I could respond back to him.
It's not his, it's not his meeting. Mr. Cole's not, Mr. Cole's not his meeting.
You're not gonna cut me off like that.
Mr. Cole, it's not his meeting.
And I will sit down, just let me respond to him, I will sit down.
I'll give you, out of respect, I'll give you thirty seconds to respond to him, and then you're gonna have to have a seat, Mr. Cole.
On that note, Mr. Mayor, the point of matter is, I'd never ask you to fire anyone. My point is, when a position come open, a position is open, and we requesting that African American be put in that position. Now, if you call, if you call that race baiting, that's gonna be.
That's not an issue, I don't have a problem. Okay, I don't have a problem doing that, but you can't put people in director's positions until somebody leaves.
Mr. President, I'd like to call for, just let's get a recess or move this program.
No, we're gonna move forward, we're gonna move forward. Remarks by the mayor and council, Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, after coming off that. Okay, of course, we hadn't presented the I-759 thing yet. But I go back to nineteen ninety-four, I go back to Walt Higgins, and all the work that was done to get that I-759 project moving here. And I just want to thank the mayor, Frankie Davis, Craig Ford, the people who really went out and got this project done, you know? And I like that word, commitment, mayor, when it says, "We gonna do it." So this been a long time coming, and it's gonna mean so much to the people of Gadsden, it's unreal.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes, I also like to say that ten years ago, when Walt was on the council with me, he was pushing that, over in East Gadsden, get that highway. And he went to all these meetings, he'd come back and tell us what was going on, he'd give us clarity on everything. And Walt really, 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 really had a lot to do with this, and I know the mayor did, Craig Ford did, Frankie did, Shane did. I appreciate all the people that worked on that project, and I just can't wait to see it finished so that everybody can get to where they need to go in East Gadsden, Hoax Bluff, Glencoe, won't have any problems, it should make our stores more, where people can go to the stores better and everything like that. And what Mr. Cole gave us here, so first I've looked at this right here, I just have to look at it and study it, 'cause today's the first time I even got this, you know, so I don't, I don't know a lot about it. I just have to look at it and see where your numbers are and all that kind of stuff. But I do, like the mayor said, we have gave ten raises in eleven years. But to do this, it looks to me like, and like I said, I hadn't looked over close, that every police officer you're talking about getting a two dollar and sixty-one cent raise.
That's the only way it's gonna be, for real. You have to give it to the, you have to give it to everybody else, maybe you're doing the same thing.
Okay, I was just looking at it that way, but I hadn't, that's all I got.
Alright, Councilman Billingsley?
Uh, yes, I have not looked at this also, but I don't have a problem with giving the police a raise if we can afford to do that. I, I, I know that you can't add everything into what the policeman get, because you're talking about driving a car home and stuff like that, I know that that costs the city a lot of money. I don't agree with that, but I go along with that, because that's what the majority of the people want. Because I just don't think a car in Altoona helps the citizens of Gadsden, that's just my opinion. I also would like to comment on my recommendation about the Water Works and Sewer Board. Now, this guy's been living out of this city for over two years, and you just look at the vote that people that took on this, evidently they have a vested interest in this, because they vote the way they voted. So I just want people to understand that, why I made the recommendation for somebody in my district, District Five, to be on the Water Works and Sewer Board. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, I have a couple items. First, I would talk about I-759, I'm glad we got that taken care of. Kudos to Representative Ford, the mayor, and everybody that worked on it. Mr. Higgins for going back and forth to Washington, and when we go to Washington DC every year, we bring the issue up. And this year was the first year we had a senator that actually sit down with us. When we went up, Representative Adalhold, he always meet with us, but the senators, you have to meet with their staff. But Luther Strange, he sat down and met with us for the first time, so we give credit where credit is due. And I have a meeting coming up, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, we'll be meeting at the Bond Life Church, District Three Community Meeting. And we also gonna have another meeting on, if I can find it here. What happens if you outlive your term life insurance policy? Whole life insurance, how it works? We're gonna have an insurance forum at Carver Community Center, at the George Baker Room, at ten-thirty Tuscaloosa Avenue. It will be on April the thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. The times will be from twelve o'clock to four o'clock. Will be hosted by myself, Kevin Smith with North Carolina Mutual will be there. Miss, Miss DeLitt Better from Legal Services of Alabama is sitting in the audience, she will be there. Then Miss Reed, John Reed's daughter from Country Financial, they also sell insurance. We would not be endorsing anybody particularly on life insurance. But we want you to come and ask questions, because we run into, I just ran into this with my family, with my grandmother, when she passed here recently. We thought she had insurance, but after she passed, the insurance policy wasn't any good. So back in the days when our elderly grandparents and parents was buying the insurance, the insurance wasn't any good. We just, you know, we didn't know. So this way, the community can come out, and they can ask questions, we have professionals there, and they could help you, so you won't have to go through the same thing that my family went through. Thank you.
Councilman Echols?
Yes, ma'am.
What time is the meeting at the Bond Life Church?
It will be from six o'clock to seven o'clock.
Okay, Mr. Echols?
I've been on this council a little while. It's been one of the most important things that could ever happen. And it looked like it was gonna be twenty years before we ever got anything done. I don't know who did it, but it looks like Craig Ford was the biggest thing that happened, and I thank him. Walt just, he spent his time trying to come up with a route to go. I don't know whether this route's yours or not, Walt, but it's important, very important. I know the mayor, and I don't know, I guess Craig got the governor up here to look at what the situation was. And it doesn't take a Philadelphia lawyer to tell you that the traffic on Meagan Boulevard is terrible. It's the only answer was the, is I-759. I think everybody has tried at one time or another to get this done. We finally got ten million dollars, and then they gave it to somebody else before we ever got anything done on it. Anyway, it's the greatest thing that's happened since I've been on the council, and that's thirty years.
Councilwoman Tolles?
I'd just like to to thank Walt Higgins, he's, was the one that was in, he's always encouraged me, especially, you know, some people say I trip to Washington DC, we could stay at home. But as long as you keep your face in the front of these people, then they'll know what you want. And that was one of the things that we always did when we went there, was to let them know that we were. that we were still interested in I-59. So, Craig Ford, Walt Higgins, this council, and the mayor is appreciative to that. And to Mr. Cole, I'm like the others, I've just got this, but another thing that I've done, I've asked the Alabama League of Municipalities. In fact, they have given me a copy of all the police officers and firemen's in the state and their salary, so I can look at what the police officers and make a comparison to see what they make compared to what we're paying them here. So, that, that's the analysis that I, that I would look at, not just for the city of Gassin, but I have the analysis to look at what the league has provided and also what you have provided.
Mayor?
Yes, I want to get Mr. Davis, Frankie Davis, he never gets much credit. Frankie, would you like to come up and, wake him up back? Would you like to come up and show the map and talk, anybody in the audience that's got any questions, the council and myself can answer them, and you can, because you know a lot about that as well? Frankie is over Economic Development and Governmental Affairs, and he's sort of behind the scenes, but he's very important in working on things for our city.
I got one yesterday. I didn't go yesterday.
This is the first time the mayor's ever got me to do this, but I need a lot of support. Walt, come on up. A project like this doesn't happen by accident, or with just one person involved. This is, a lot of folks have said, a long-going project. Now, all cities have a lot of issues, as you've heard today. But on this one issue, the mayor has always made this his number-one infrastructure priority since he's been in office. People like former councilman Walt Higgins has made that his priority. The current council, in trips to Washington and the discussions with the government, had made, the governor, have made this a high priority. This is the, one, one of the biggest capacity projects that you'll see going on in the state for quite some time because of decreased funding from the federal and state level. I want the public to see that Representative Craig Ford, as well as the mayor in this council, have worked very hard together to see this project come to fruition. It will greatly enhance economic development in this city, as well as improve safety for traffic flow. And for that, I'm thankful that we have this many people that have put a lot of effort into something that will be great for this city. Now, that's why I don't get to come up here very often. Thank you.
He didn't tell him that he would let him drive back to Montgomery. He didn't tell him that we'd let him drive back to Montgomery.
Craig got behind that. We're going about ninety. I didn't know where he was. He went some back roads I've never been on.
While Mr. Davis is going to his seat, one of the things that we also need to know, you know, we have a lot of eighteen-wheelers that come off of I-759, and sometime they go in the neighborhoods, or they go in different areas. So, this will be a project that, as I asked them in a meeting, fast-track. But it'll be a project that will help to also relieve some of the eighteen-wheelers that come in our areas.
Yes. I want to go back to police a second. You know, we didn't have very many when I got here, and they have a terrible, dangerous job. And we try to get all the equipment, the cameras, the safety things, all the training, FBI schools. We try to do everything we can to help, help keep our policemen safe, and we appreciate them, just like we do the firemen. I would also like to remind you, Mr. Cole, I'm the one who hired Courtney. Nobody else did, I did. So, you know, I'm always looking to hire anybody who applies, but when you have people that's been here thirty and thirty-five years, they're department heads, they hadn't retired, you can't get rid of them until they retire. So, that's the way it really is.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say something very quickly about the, the whole department head issue. So, there, there was, we, we raised, when we, when I took office back in twenty-ten for the first time, we raised the issue with the mayor. And, and it was, it was noted back then that he inherited quite a bit of the issue. And I think, you know, it's kind of good to have Mr. Higgins here because he, he knows that the mayor inherited a good bit of the department head activity, or, or the lack of diversity at that level with the city. To, to his credit, we, we, we discussed very openly with him the whole notion and the idea of hiring the now-former director. We talked to him about that, and he made the decision, in large part based on that recommendation, to hire. There were other more, probably more qualified candidates out there at that time, but we made the decision to hire him. And I think going forward, we'll continue to do, do that, and we'll continue to consider that. We, let's not forget, you know, in twenty-fourteen, we passed an inclusion program that allows us both in, both in purchasing scenarios and relative to personnel scenarios to consider, to actively consider qualified minority candidates, and female candidates, by the way. So, so those are, those are things that are currently on the books. Before twenty-fourteen, that kind of thing was not on the books. There's something on the books now that the mayor's office considers in all purchasing and personnel scenario, so that, that will be considered going forward. And as opportunity presents itself to, to right-size our diversity numbers, this, this administration has shown that they're committed to doing that. So, so again, I think, I think it's, I think it's clear that we have an opportunity there, and we'll address it. Okay? You know, just very quickly, we've said a lot about Interstate seven fifty-nine, and again, I don't, I don't want to miss the point and the opportunity to, to highlight what Representative Ford did in terms of keeping the momentum of this project going. Former councilmember Higgins, and he's a friend of mine, Walt has been around a long time. And the fact that he's been around a long time represents just how long we've been pounding the drum relative to this project. I can remember the first community meetings when people were yelling and screaming at the FHA director about not liking the routes and not wanting their communities busted up, and the flyover options, and there was just a lot of feedback. And in the beginning, the community was not for it. Then folks got wind of the fact that they, we might, they might be buying houses, and then, then the, then the attitude changed. And, and then there, there became, people started to see the realizing, realize the, the benefit of it, not just from that perspective, but they also realized that our traffic situation, as Mr. Echols mentioned, is horrendous. And, and the beauty of what Representative Ford did is he took the opportunity to get the governor here, when no other representatives would do it. He took the opportunity, or couldn't do it, to be quite honest. He took the opportunity to get the governor here. The governor rode Meagan Boulevard at about two P.M., three P.M., and he saw the impact. And so, that had a lot to do with why the, that had a lot to do with why this project is being moved forward. You know, it was asked in the meeting whether or not, whether or not there is a timeline. You know, fast-track is a very generic term, but it just speaks to the fact that it will allow the project to move forward actively. I don't think anybody at this point can give a timeline, just like they couldn't for the four-eleven bypass. But the four-eleven bypass was eventually, once we got through all the politics, it was actually finished. And it took Senator Larry Means at that time to make sure, as a capacity project, that it didn't get removed from the books. So, we'll continue to need some support politically to make sure that this project, which is a capacity project, doesn't get removed from the books going forward. And our goal is to get to a spending point to where it's, it's essentially the point of no return. So, again, we're, we're very excited about where, where we're headed with this, and I think Mr. Echols, Echols hit it on the head. This is a big project for the city, and, and I don't want any of the background knowers or any, anything else that's going on to, to get us away from the fact that this is, this is very important for, for the city. I was asked to make an announcement regarding the Optimize Your Borrowing Power event that's being sponsored by BBVA Compass and the Chamber. Looks like that event's going to be held on Friday, April fourteenth, from three to four P.M. at the Chamber Building. So, anyone that's interested in learning about credit repair, credit optimization, homeownership, new business ventures, and business expansion should, should, should come out and attend this event. And, and the very last thing I'll say before we entertain the motion to adjourn, I do want to apologize to those who attended today for, for this meeting, running as long as it did. But in particular, our longstanding folks like Mr. Whiteley and Curly Duramus and, and Mr. Porch and, and some other folks who are here every week and are accustomed to getting out of here at, at noon. And you too, Mr. Sturman, I know you, you hang in here with us every week, so we appreciate that. But I, I want, I really want people to, to stay dialed in to the, the things that are important as it relates to this city. We, Gulf State Steel, I was in college when Gulf State Steel was closed, and one of the scary, that was one of the scariest moments for this city because it represented a time when we thought that it was going to bankrupt us. We thought it was going to take us back to the stone age economically. But we've been able to manage our way through it, and it, and I, and I think this mayor that we have right now was a big part of the reason why we were able to, to get out of that bad situation because he was, you know, he's stingy, he's cheap, that's for sure. But he, but he's definitely the kind of conservative, fiscally conservative mayor we needed at the time to get us through it. Now, we don't always agree on everything, but I, I definitely agree with, with where he takes us from a financial perspective and, and a lot of those things he suggests. But, but please, we're, we're in some difficult times right now. Industrially, we're, we're kind of in a, at a quagmire. We've, we've had to move away from some, from some things to remarket ourselves from an industrial perspective. You know, as a city, we may not have the land capacity to, to, to land the big, the big-ticket industry at this point. So, our strategy has to involve the medium-sized or small-sized, and, and a lot of them, but the, the small-sized industries. Commercial development-wise, Lisa Osman works her behind off marketing this city. She works really hard. But, but at the end of the day, commercial development is about private investors being willing to invest in your city. And, and, and with, with where we are with internet sales, it's very difficult for a lot of the brick-and-mortar folks to make money and, and to do it effectively. So, that's why you're seeing a lot of the, the closings and the, and the store closings that we're experiencing in the area. So, what we've got to do, along with seven fifty-nine, is look at some creative ways of diversifying this economy so we don't allow Gassin to back up economically. And, and there are some things that we're working on, and you're going to see more and more of this kind of stuff going forward. But, but again, it's, it's all about being strategic and not emotional relative to how you plan for your, your economic development. And it's more, and it's not so much about some of these old ideas of how you grow your eco, your economy. There, there are a lot of new ways and, and, and a lot of new efforts that are underway to make sure that we're diversified going into the future. And we have to do a lot of this stuff in spite of our state legislature. So, so please understand that.
I do want to say, thank you for those kind comments. I'll tell you one thing that would have helped the economy and raises and everything else, there's between five and six hundred jobs open at the auto suppliers that we have out here around the airport. It's not like Gulf State Steel used to be, or even Goodyear. It's our condition, it's safe. They start out, somebody say, well, you know, the salary, it starts around, most of the companies that I've, and, and Councilman Worthy can tell you, he's had two or three job fares. But those jobs are good, start about nine-fifty to ten dollars an hour, up to about eighteen. Some of them have 401K, some of them have insurance. It's, and they keep expanding. We have Tier Two and Three suppliers here, and all the big companies are adding new models, and we have a lot of openings. And if we had about five hundred more people working, there'd be a lot more money coming in, revenue from shopping and spending and doing everything. So, you know, you just have to show up, be there to show up to work, and you have to test negative for drugs. That's the only two requirements. So, we need some workers.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.